Okay. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. Okay. Can we all please stand and say the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ann Standig?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Wolsheimer?
Here.
Mayor Craig?
Here. Okay, do we have any changes to the orders of the day?
None.
Okay. Moving on to oral communications at this point, anybody who would like to speak about any item not on the agenda, please come forward and we'll give you a couple of minutes to say something. And Sean, I'm sure you have a card in here somewhere.
I do, but this is not on the agenda.
Right, right. But go ahead and...
I do have a card.
Yep. I've had a chance to look through the card to see if anybody else had anything they wanted to talk about.
So, good evening, council, mayor, staff. Thank you. I believe that from information that appears to be in front of us, that the council just had a closed session in violation of the Brown Act and did not report upon coming out. If that's true, I'd like to have that dealt with and corrected properly. If it's untrue, I'd like to see if there's a closed session scheduled any time in the near future and what the content is because we haven't received notice of any such thing.
I apologize, mayor. We did in fact meet in closed session. It was a little hectic because we were running late. We met in closed session regarding existing litigation, Hacienda Realty versus City of Monteserino, and there was nothing to report.
Okay, I believe that's probably a Brown Act violation and we will pursue that in due course. Thank you.
Okay, are there any written communications?
Andrea?
No.
Okay. Great. So we're on the consent calendar right now. Would anybody like to pull any items from the consent calendar? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So item number seven, weed abatement. And who will be introducing this item?
The matter before you is our routine of the weed abatement, the kickoff of the season. There was a list that was presented 10 days prior to. It's included in your packet. All those owners on that list were notified and were invited to attend if they had comments or an objection. And this is just our routine commencement of the weed abatement program. They will have enough time to abate the weeds that were identified before they're assessed, which happens in July.
Okay.
That's basically it.
Do we have any questions for staff? Okay. And are there any members of the public who would like to comment on item number seven, the weed abatement?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, sorry, just to clarify, we are opening the public hearing.
Yes. Okay. Come on up, Mr. Calhoun. Did you submit a blue card on this topic?
Oh, I did. No, I wasn't.
Okay. So when you're finished, if you could just get one handed in, that would be great. Thanks.
Good evening, council. John Calhoun, 18125 Constitution Avenue. I've met with the county the last three years with Mo and Chumery or whatever, all them, and I've complied with every request they've had. And they'd indicated after three years I'd be off. And now my whole lot's graded and I'm getting ready to plant and stuff, so it's going to be my request. I don't know if I do it through the council or I just wanted to put you on notification as my intent, that we had an agreement that after three years I would be off the abatement program for compliance.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Let me fill that out now.
If you could, please.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, we moved them over there. Okay. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on item number seven? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring them back to council. Do you have any questions or any comments? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to...
No, the motion would be to adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Monteserino over ruling objections and determining to proceed with weed abatement.
I make that motion.
Second's a motion. Okay. Do we need a roll call on this? Or...
Councilmember Ann Standig?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolsheimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 5-0.
Okay, great. So item number eight is the refuse vehicle impact fee. And who will be introducing this topic?
This will be a joint effort tonight. I'm going to start out with just a little bit of general information, but Jim Helmer, our transportation consultant, who's been assisting me enormously with this, will be carrying the heavy weight, which he has been through this whole process.
All right. Thank you.
So, just to start, tonight it's our desire to have an open and transparent and robust discussion about a possible funding source to assist with ongoing maintenance to our 12.4-mile residential street system. Staff and the city council are aware of the insufficient investment over time in systematic street repairs and the deterioration that this has caused over the years. Per your direction last year, we did a technical analysis of our street pavement and are now in year one of the five-year investment plan to begin the process of addressing the backlogs of repairs and maintenance. To bring our street paving into an optimal condition would have required an investment of over $1 million per year for the next five years, which, you know, given our current sources of funding, was not really possible. Jim Helmer, who's here tonight, and other consultants helped us to develop an overall funding plan, which consists of about a $2.2 million total over five years, which averages to about $414,000 per year. And this is to be spent over the next five years. This is something that you, the council, approved in July. And with this program, that would bring the city's overall street pavement condition up to the level of good. Almost half of that, $900,000, was relying on the transfer funds from the General Fund Reserve. And that was money which had been set aside in the General Fund Reserve account that was built up through the construction vehicle impact fee that we'd been collecting over a number of years. A refuse vehicle impact fee is a fee that only the city council can approve, and it can be temporary, it can be rolled back, or terminated at any time by the city council. It potentially could generate up to $130,000 per year. And just to note that there are four cities in the existing West Valley Collection and Recycling Program, and of the four, we are the only city that currently does not have the refuse vehicle impact fee. 100% of the fees collected from households by West Valley Collection and Recycling would be returned to the city, and it would be applied to the city's overall pavement management program. So the funds that we would be collecting through the service with the residents would be used solely for the upkeep and maintenance of the city's streets. Tonight's discussion is about a refuse vehicle impact fee on our sanitation trucks that staff considers overall to be a fair and balanced way to increase funding from our citywide street paving program. We are, like I said, we already collect one-time fees for, I'm sorry, I didn't say this, but we already collect one-time fees for construction truck impacts that are caused by private development, and these are known as road impact fees. And we have been collecting those for a number of years. And enacting a refuse vehicle impact fee would allow the city to collect fees to cover the costs of the other major activity that impacts our city's streets the most. So I just wanted to give a brief little introduction to the council and to the community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and he's going to dive into more details, and then we'll open up the process to questions from the council. And of course, we'll be receiving input from the public as well tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Mayor and members of the city council, a pleasure to be here before you tonight and talk about this very important item. And it is regarding the consideration of a refuse vehicle impact fee, which would be imposed against West Valley Collection and Recycling LLC. I think it's important for all of us to take a look at some of the major decisions that you, as a council, have made in the last 12 months. And it has allowed us to really set a target and to get very serious about the goals and the policies in a strategic and a tactical way. In February, at your retreat, you adopted, and officially at city council in February, you adopted a goal for improved infrastructure, transportation, pedestrian, and bicycle safety. You followed on in April at your council meeting by authorizing the city manager to approve green infrastructure plan framework. That's the manner in which we would environmentally, in a sensitive way, build new drainage systems in our city that are required by the Water Quality Control District. April 18th, you unanimously adopted Monteserino's Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. In May, you adopted a complete streets resolution, which ensures that all of our investments in streets in the future will be done so in a fair and balanced way, taking into consideration pedestrians, motorists, bicyclists, maybe even equestrian traffic. But it is a requirement that we look at every street in a complete streets manner. In June, you authorized the city manager to send a letter of support for the passage of Senate Bill 231, which I'm pleased to say has passed, signed into law. It is under challenge, I believe. But what this does is it would allow cities such as ours to look at easier ways to fund through fees stormwater system maintenance, whereas now, that is not possible. In June, you approved $825,000 as part of the pavement management program. $645,000 of that will be spent this year, this spring and summer construction season on up to 16 streets. And $180,000 of that figure will be spent on Blanchard Drive for a pilot improvement project, where we are working with that community specifically to develop an improvement project that we've been having discussions with them in front of their 27 homes. In June, you also approved funding for the refuse vehicle impact fee analysis, and that's the study which is attached to the staff report and included electronically. You also included a direction to staff to do a fees and charges study, and that should be completed by February or March of this year. In October, you approved our first-ever Public Works Standards and Details, so that we are not without a manner in which to direct developers and others on what improvements need to be done on the streets. With these standards, we would actually have construction details on how to build a curb or a driveway approach and other public works details. Those are also online. And then most recently, in November, on the 7th, you approved the first-ever Better Streets Commission, a commission of five, that will begin this year in dealing with issues involving our streets, but not only the pavement and the condition of our streets, but also things such as traffic control, speed, parking, and other street-related issues. So in just 12 months, we are very pleased with all of the direction that you have given us and the authority for us to move forward on so many items. This bar chart is a little difficult to read, but it's our revenue needs for the next five years, including the year that we're in now, the 2017 fiscal year. And it totals about $2.2 million over five years. The $2.2 million would bring our pavement condition up from a fair condition, which is, in a technical sense, it's called the pavement condition index. And currently, as a city, we are at 63 overall citywide average. This would bring it up to over 70 and into the good range. An optimal pavement system would be 80 or above. But the $2.2 million would bring us into the good category. It would take over $5 million or about $1.1 million a year to get us over 80. The first year, which is the tall bar on the left, is the year we're in now, and you appropriated $825,000. As I just mentioned earlier, that's primarily for the pavement management program of those 16 streets and the $180,000 pilot project on Blanchard. Next year is an important year for us because we still are shy $150,000 in our needs to reach our $2.2 million five-year goal. So we will be coming back to you in July with a request for an additional $150,000 to go into this pavement maintenance program. It's important that these first two years are funded at higher levels than the outlying years, and that's so that we can prevent streets from falling into further decay, which in turn increases the cost to make the repairs. Once the city, once a street falls below the range of 60, it rapidly deteriorates and the cost to fix it escalates, sometimes five and 10 times more than what it would cost if we would deal with the problem at the beginning. The last three years are a little over $315,000 each. And now I'd like to turn to what our 2018, 19 pavement revenues could look like with the inclusion of the fee that we are discussing tonight. I also want to make point out that in the prior slide, we assumed $150,000 in the second bar chart, bar from the left. This particular slide, I've taken that figure out, just so that we could see what it would look like if we did not come back for the $150,000. We believe we would have a total revenue coming into the city of $443,000, made up of $15,000 from fines and forfeitures that are sent back to us from the state for illegal driving and various traffic infractions. The recently passed Measure B sales tax that applies countywide is, will generate about $65,000 for us. That'll be the first full year of collection. And that figure will rise to close to $100,000 over the next 10 years. So it'll steadily increase by $3,000 to $5,000 per year. That's an estimate, of course. The lower corner and the lower portion of this pie chart in green, I think it's green, sort of, is the gas tax revenues that come in to the city. And these include the new gas tax that California voters approved, called Senate Bill 1, signed into law last October. Collections have started. Of that $153,000, $58,000 of that is the approximate amount that will come from the new Senate Bill 1 measure. And that figure should rise a little bit each year over the next 10 years as well. The portion of the pie chart on the lower left is what the refuse vehicle impact fee would generate, about $130,000, and that would be pending your council direction to staff. So without the general fund transfer of $150,000, we could estimate with some confidence that we would be able to fund $443,000 in street work next year, in 2018, 19. And this figure would increase slightly each year thereafter, as I mentioned, through planned increases in these tax collections. And that bodes well for us because in the outer years, we were looking at a need of at least $315,000 a year. This would help us do more sooner and to lower the overall backlog of that $5.1 million that we have. This is a photograph of a street in Monteserino. And it just, I put it in here just to show an example of the continuous pounding of refuse vehicle trucks in a certain spot on a street, day in, well, week in, week out. It will damage the edges of the pavement. The damage will penetrate further into the driving lanes, and eventually, water and mud will form in the rainy season, and we get pumping action, and then the street is basically not repairable. It has to be a full dig-out and reconstruction. And that is a very, very expensive proposition on a street like this. And we have many streets with similar conditions like this throughout the city. This is rated poor. We have some streets rated very poor. There's been a lot of correspondence to staff in the last week or two about our property tax collections, so I thought I would include this just for a point of reference. In Monteserino, in the 2015, 16 tax collection cycle, about $19.6 million were paid by property tax, by property owners in the City of Monteserino. And of that $19.6 million, the City of Monteserino gets 5.3% of the total collections. So our total collection from over $19.6 million was $1.2 million came into our city for that cycle of property tax collections. And with the cost of doing government business in several of our service areas, the $1.2 million has been necessary to pay for things like increased costs of public safety, fire protection dues, and other very important services, programs, and projects that we must do as a city. So I just did want to share with the audience and the city council, it's an interesting chart because over 55% of the revenues collected go to schools, all levels of school. About 14% of the revenues go to the Central Fire District. 12% goes to the county alone, county itself. So we get 1.2%, excuse me, 5.3%. I've included this table in this slide presentation. It's a duplicate of what's in the staff report. And this would be the fee that households would be charged if you were to approve the fee at the highest level, the 100% level that staff has recommended. On the column on the left, it shows that we have 1,104 billing accounts in the city. That's a little less than the 1,200 or so addresses that we have. Some, I don't know how many, but some property owners opt out of garbage collection and they haul their own. So that's one reason why the number of accounts is less than the addresses. And other properties may be under construction or for some other reason, they aren't needing garbage service right now. If your primary solid waste can is the smallest, and 45 clients and customers, households in the city do use that small 20-gallon can, it looks just like a 35-gallon can, but I understand it has an insert in it, so it can only collect 20 gallons of garbage. The refuse vehicle impact fee would come to $4.89 per month if you did approve the fee at the highest level that we've recommended. As you can see, when you get to a 95-gallon can, and there's 109 customers in the city that have the 95-gallon can, the fee is substantial because of the amount of weight that is cumulative and collected throughout the year. And it's about a $21.90 increase. So the last slide here is, I'm just going to go over our recommendation to you once again, so it's clear what staff is asking. We're asking you to adopt a resolution establishing a refuse vehicle impact fee of $130,300 on West Valley Collection and Recycling effective July 1. We're asking you to direct the city manager to authorize the West Valley Collection and Recycling to begin collecting the refuse vehicle impact fees from all of its customers effective the same date. We're asking to authorize the city manager to adjust the refuse vehicle impact fee imposed upon West Valley Collection annually, based upon the San Francisco Bay Area Construction Index, which is a little bit different than the Consumer Index. And we're asking you to direct the city manager to review the refuse vehicle impact fee no later than 10 years after the adoption of any fee. You could certainly consider a sooner date, but we recommend going no longer than 10 years. And that concludes our staff report.
And Jim, if you could go back to the prior slide, because we had a lot of questions from the public about this, and I just want to make sure that they, as well as the council, knows. So the fee is only assessed on the one garbage container that an individual has. It's not assessed on recycling containers or on your yard waste. So any one household would only be assessed one fee. So for example, if your household has a 35-gallon container, it would just be $1.730 per month if the council goes forward with the maximum. That would be assessed per household. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everyone, because we did have a lot of questions about that.
And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff? No?
From staff or for staff?
No, to staff. From us to the staff about the staff report.
I do have a question.
Yes.
I guess my question is probably something that the citizens will probably have in their mind, is instead of having the refuse, the fee hike, why don't we take funds from the General Reserve Funds and put it into the streets?
That is certainly a possibility. I mean, the council did direct staff to proceed with this fee study, which we did. There was a budget line item in the budget from this fiscal year budget, so we did proceed with the study as we were instructed. And the study was conducted, the results came out, and that's precisely why we're here tonight, to talk about the fee itself. But it is true that at the end of the day, you know, whether or not the council approves the refuse vehicle impact fee or not, of course, you know, funds from the General Fund could be used for our pavement management program. And it's looking like, you know, we will likely have to take some anyway, but this would lessen that. And this would also, in addition to lessening the need to take some funds out of the General Fund in the short term, this, you know, fee could also provide a steady stream of revenue that the city could use to offset the damage that's caused by the refuse vehicles themselves.
Just to further on that point, the idea behind this fee is to assess the company a cost for maintaining our streets due to the wear and tear that's caused by their vehicles. Under the contract that the city receives the service from West Valley Collection and Recycling, they do have the right to pass that on to their customers. But really, what we're doing tonight is imposing a fee on the solid waste hauler to compensate us for the damage that they're causing to our streets. So it's just a question of, should they be paying for the cost of the damage that they're causing? And yes, they can pass it on to the customers. Ultimately, the customers will be paying it. But the idea is that the company that's causing the damage should pay for that.
Okay. Yes.
Yes. Mr. City Manager, would you, can you please comment on the level of dollars invested in street management and the last, street repair maintenance in the last 10 years or so?
Do you have the number handy for that?
I have the state auditor's report for the last five years. The average expenditure in all street-related programs, including pavement, is $71,000 and change per year for the last five years. That's an average. And that's determined by the state auditor, who comes in and goes through our books. Looking at the budget itself, line items are sometimes have difficulty when you take a look at a budget for the first time to try to make heads or tails what the numbers really are. So we believe that that is a very accurate figure that the auditor has provided. I will say that that's a low, a very low figure for any street system. And I would also say that of the $71,000 average per year, a smaller portion of that was used for paving itself. It could have been used for a repair of a slide or installation of other street-related improvements, but the number is 71,000. That's the level of detail I have. I'm sorry, I don't have more for you on that.
Okay. So it's fair to say that we significantly underspent?
Yes.
Okay.
And hence the reason why, you know, the council's moving forward with the overall pavement management program over the next five years. management program over the next five years, that it's worth over two million dollars in its entirety.
And you'll recall that in January, we adopted the Pavement Management Options Report, which led to all of the recommended actions for our five-year plan. And we can always make this available to the community if they'd like to get a copy.
It is available, I believe it is available online, correct, Andre? Yes, it is available online.
Mr. Mayor, just one more point, too. As I mentioned, we are members of a JPA, a Joint Powers Authority, that provides the solid waste service throughout the jurisdictions of Saratoga, Montesereno, Los Gatos, and Campbell. All three other jurisdictions did impose a vehicle impact fee back in two thousand and nine. The city of Montesereno determined not to do that, which may explain why the amount spent on roadway repairs was so low. But it was two thousand and nine when it was imposed by the other jurisdictions.
I guess I'd like a better explanation of why we shouldn't take it from the general fund as opposed to why we can't, why the general fund's there. I think that's the important question.
Okay. What I can say to that is that the council does have a fiscal policy, which they adopted in two thousand and four. And based on that policy, the council set a minimum of two times, a minimum of general fund reserves equal to two times the city's operating budget as a minimum, and it said as six times as the maximum. So based on that, the most recent budget was developed, and as part of the determination of how much should go into the general fund reserves, the council agreed with the budget adoption that it would be at the bottom end of that at about two times. And so that is where we stand. It is a policy. It's certainly a policy the council could change. But given what the council's policy is, and given the budget being adopted, it was in line with the amount of general fund reserves that would normally be held back and not spent on other current operating expenses or capital improvements. But the council's prerogative is to change that. That certainly is a possibility.
Councilmember Brand standing.
Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. City Manager, so where are we at now with respect to our reserves?
We're just a little over two times with the adoption of the last budget. It was a little over twice as much.
Okay, thank you. A couple other questions. The JPA, does the JPA actually negotiate the terms of the agreement that we currently have with West Valley?
They do. So the contract is actually entered into between West Valley Collection and Recycling and the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. So the city is actually not an individual party to the contract. It is between the JPA and the company.
And based upon, and the cities that are involved are Campbell, Los Gatos, Saratoga, and us.
And Montes, correct.
So we're the four members. And in two thousand and nine, when Campbell, Los Gatos, and Saratoga implemented this fee, do you know why we did not?
I do not.
I wasn't there.
No, I wasn't pointing the finger.
No, but I wasn't there.
No, I just don't recall that issue coming before the council.
I think it was a decision made at a staff level that at the time, it wasn't necessary, that it was more important to keep the rates lower. That's my recollection, but.
I think this is, this is not exactly a question, but it will get to a question. And I think that it's helpful to, it was helpful for me to put a little bit of this into some historical perspective, because we really did not closely examine the condition of our streets for a significant period of time. And that's not, that's just the fact. And the fact that we spent so little over the period of time has kind of caused us to sort of end up in the perfect storm that we did this past year, no pun intended. Because with the historic amounts of rain that we received and the condition of the streets, it really punctuated the level of quality that we had, which caused us to ask Mr. Helmer, who's done a fabulous job evaluating the status of where we are today, to determine that we really have some work to do in the city. And that's the issue that's really before us, is trying to remedy that in a very cost-effective manner. And I, and I really think it's crucial that we do that. And Blanchard was the first street that came to us in a very bad way with a very poor condition of the streets, and that led us to this particular issue. But the question that I have, as it relates to all of that, and I realize, I doubt that there's anybody in this room that wants to raise their hand and say, yeah, charge me more, because I don't think anybody, none of us, I think, want to see that happen. But the question I have is that we get a license fee from West Valley annually. Is that correct?
We get a franchise fee. It's actually paid monthly, but yes.
A franchise, and where does that money go? Does that go?
It's a general fund revenue.
And that is, how much money is that? That's, is it about seventeen percent of the?
The franchise fee is nineteen percent. I don't know what that total dollar figure is on a yearly basis.
So we get out of the funds that all of the citizens pay to West Valley, we get a fee back to the city already?
Correct. So it's a charge, it's a payment by the company for the ability to operate within our city limits.
And I guess the question that I have is if I operated West Valley, and I was driving these big, heavy vehicles on the streets, wouldn't I be prudent as part of my budgeting process to figure that I'm going to have to pay somebody some cost for the damage I do to their streets?
In the contract between West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority and the collection company, it does provide that a vehicle impact fee is an allowable pass-through to the customers. So in their proposals, that was something that they either requested or was included, that they would have the ability to do that. So I would assume that would have been built into their model.
But, well, but ultimately, I guess if we were to make a claim, the claim would be your trucks damaged our streets, and accordingly, you should pay us for that. Yes, no?
No. So part of the franchise fee is intended to be used to pay for street repairs. The difference now is the business models have changed, and there are considerably more trips than were previously contemplated due to the type of the trucks, the amount of the solid waste, the routes that are taken. So the damage to the streets is greater than anticipated. So therefore, the need for that additional revenue or additional charge.
Or there are additional costs to operate.
Correct.
Okay, that's all the questions that I have at this point.
Yes.
I wanted clarification on the fees, right? The proposed fee hike. Will these fees continue indefinitely? And will it increase every year? And then do we review it after ten years to see if we want to continue it or not? Is that what it says in the document?
Well, the recommendation that we're making is, well, a couple of things. One is that we, at a minimum, come back to review it in ten years, which could be sooner, as Jim indicated. We are recommending that a index be used that allows it to be, to go up a little bit each year. And we're recommending it go with the San Francisco Bay Area Construction Cost Index, because that is tied in more to construction activity and less about like the Consumer Price Index, which is a basket of goods. So we are recommending those two pieces.
The council also has the authority to annually make a determination if they want to continue the fee or not. So we are recommending, though, that at a minimum, it be reviewed no longer than ten years.
Okay, yes.
I guess the question is, we recently had a tax increase, the gas tax, right? Are we confident that that's the amount that we're going to get that you showed us in one of your slides?
As a matter of fact, on January eleventh, we just received the updated figures from the state, and we adjusted our slides tonight to match those. And those are the best figures that are being used by every city in the state at this point in time. And I'm very confident in that much of those fees, gas taxes, are historical from past trends. The Senate bill, one estimate, as I indicated, is fifty-eight thousand dollars coming in. We've been telling you for months, we thought it would be sixty. And so we're very confident about the approximate accuracy there.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. When I first saw this proposal was going to come up, I tried to do a little bit of research about the impact of the garbage trucks on our road. And I was pretty astounded. And when I talked to Jim about this a little bit earlier, you had given me a number that the one trip of a garbage truck going up and down our streets is a thousand cars. Is that correct?
Yeah, based upon the weight of the truck and the axle impacts and the damage that it causes when it's doing its collecting process, it's the equivalent of about a thousand passenger vehicles passing on that same street.
Okay. And as I was looking through some of the written communication on this, there were some questions about construction vehicles. And I wanted to see if staff could address how we collect a fee for that also.
As I noted a little bit in the beginning, we do collect a construction vehicle impact fee and have so for quite a few years.
It's in the blue on the upper line.
Right, and so within the fiscal year, two, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we estimate that we will receive about eighty thousand dollars. And as I noted, outside of the refuse vehicles, the construction vehicles are the other vehicles that by far do the most deterioration, cause the most deterioration to our streets.
Okay.
This figure of eighty thousand dollars is based upon projected construction activity, and it varies widely over the, it has varied very widely over the last decade. Because of recessionary.
And then the other thing was, just in terms of a little bit of history, I know we've spent more than seventy thousand, or I know that more than seventy thousand dollars worth of road construction has been done in our cities. But a lot of that has come whenever utilities or other operations in our city have occurred, and it's been up to those companies to provide any type of road repaving. Is that correct?
Correct. And in our encroachment permit procedures, they are required to bring the street and restore the street to its original condition, if not better. And often what that results in is a need for a company, like a water company, for instance, to make a much longer or wider repair than just the very small trench. We inspect that very closely. Also, in the cases of new development, often a developer and his or her contractor will be required to do improvements all the way out to the center line of the street. So, for instance, I was on Xena today, talking to a constituent, and you can see where that developer repaired the entire half of the street when they built three new homes. So, yes, we do watch the utilities very closely, and they do a lot of the restoration.
Okay. And then just to kind of follow up with overall in your presentation, this has really come about because of the historical range that we had over the past year, and how they just really just hit our streets really hard, harder than they've ever hit them before, correct?
That punctuated the problem. That really brought it home when we were out regularly trying to deal with tremendous amounts of water for, with no place to go, no defined management systems for that water. I would add that in some cases, if fees like this are brought in, the city could also use those to do some emergency repairs for curbs and gutters and drainage systems on top of the pavement needs. It should be noted that paving a street with no curbs is not really a complete solution in many cases. You won't get the life of that street as you would if it had some rigidity on both sides. We're not proposing that. It's just that in some cases, the city has, three-fourths of a street has curbs down one side, and then one-fourth doesn't, and we have poor drainage conditions on that street. So we can look at more complete solutions with a fee like this than just paving.
Okay, great. And prior to the PCI report that we got last year, when was the last PCI report done? And do you know what that score was?
I don't know the history of the last one. I wasn't able to find that we had one. So it may be there, but I wasn't able to find it.
Okay, great, thanks. And then I guess the last comment I wanted to just make or question was, this fee is not going into the general fund, correct? It's going to be in a special fund created specifically for street repairs.
Well, correct. It has to be used specifically for street maintenance and repair.
Okay. And one of the ideas that I had brought up was the possibility of using our new Streets Commission to be an overseer of this and make sure that they are looking at this and that the money is being spent properly. And I just wanted to put that forward and see if that was something that the rest of the council would be thinking was a good idea, if this fee were to get approved.
And as a staff person and the city manager, I agree completely. I think the newly formed Better Streets Commission would be an excellent place for staff to provide regular updates, or at a minimum, a yearly update on, this is exactly where we are in terms of pavement maintenance and improvement. This is where the funding's come from. This is how we have spent any fees that are collected if the council does enact a fee tonight. So I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay, great, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. We have a number of cards. And we are going to ask everyone to really try to stay within the three-minute allotted time, so we can get through them all. And the first name on the list is Suzanne Jackson.
Good evening. Thank you for having me speak to this. My name is Suzanne Jackson. I live on Grandview Avenue. I've been resident of Montesereno for about forty-two years, and I love this city. And I want to make sure that the city maintains its incredible ambiance to the rest of the community. I've gone over the city's archives and looked at what was spent on road repairs in the past few years, and the average of seventy-two thousand dollars seems to be the number. We've had years where there's been more money going out, and up to a hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars, and some years where it was only forty-four thousand dollars were spent. There are seventy-five streets in Montesereno, and only a few streets do not have a curb. There are, these are the ones that are experiencing the problems. If you attach the one hundred and thirty-dollar annual garbage fee to the identified, well, I had twelve hundred and eighty-seven households, so my number's off, in the city, the fee will provide the city with a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. The three cities that you identified in your report and listed in their garbage impact fees were Campbell, which was four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, Los Gatos, which was three hundred and seventy-three thousand, and Saratoga, which is three hundred and fifty-one thousand. These are much bigger cities, and in fact, they are almost ten times the size of Montesereno and have that many more roads than we do. The city has also accumulated a reserve of six point one million dollars, really, six million, sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars as of last fiscal year. And looking at the past five years under the capital budget expenses and maintenance line items, the amount of the money spent on city maintenance has been very low. This can be interpreted as the city putting off-road maintenance services for the city. Why don't we just put curbs on the city? If we don't want sidewalks in the city, we could put curbs on those cities, and that would actually take care of some of the problems. The city could well afford to address road maintenance without adding another fee to our tax bill. And by the way, this was mentioned before, our state and local taxes will not be deductible in the new federal tax. That's something to consider right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Shahid? Shahid Sehlas. S-E-I-J-I. Oh, there we go. Sorry about the...
That's Sei Shiba.
Okay. Oh, that's a...
I live on 18350 Lexington Drive, and I think I'm an unofficial representative of the Lexington Drive Homeowners Would Be Association, if we had one. I would like to know what provision you have for private roads with this tax on all the citizens. You're taking, you're using...
Okay, so, we'll answer all of the questions at the end of the public hearing, okay?
Okay.
All right.
You're using the, what could be a tax on this, to maintain city streets, but what about private streets? The city says you have no control over anything on the private streets. Why don't you go ahead and annex the private streets? Then you do have control.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Michael Trees?
Michael Trees, living on Vineland Avenue. Want to thank the council for a chance to speak. A lot of the information that was already given out was covered what I wanted to talk about, in particular, the current balance of over $6 million in general funds. Again, I don't think that's been adequately addressed, why those funds cannot be used, particularly in the, looking at the impact here. I do note that the road impact fee alone is more on that chart than has been used on average every year. Doesn't even include the other gasoline tax and other taxes as well. More important to me is that this is a new tax. It's being done in a council rather than on a general-wide ballot issue. So, one of my questions to the city is, why aren't we putting this as a bond issue before the entire city? That is a third option. It does not have to come as general funds. It does not have to come as an increased fee. It could, in fact, come as a bond issue that is voted on by all citizens. So, everybody gets a chance to do that. On second, I was looking at some of the well-presented information here. I'm very familiar with the picture that was taken, and some happen to know that specific spot quite well. And one of the questions I have here is that not all of the erosion is caused by, as we know, trucks, by cars, and everything else. So, there are other issues, such as drainage, that needs to be addressed as well. I don't know if this program will, in fact, address those issues. That's my second question, is really seems like addressing the drainage is a key issue to preventing any kind of additional erosion. The next question I have is really, really much more critical, and I haven't been able to research this or find out any information. My recollection is that about 15 years ago, or maybe more, the city did do some paving in our neighborhood, and it was probably one of the worst paving jobs I've ever seen. It was tar and gravel, great for your paint jobs, you know, so your new Tesla's not going to look real great after driving on one of these streets. So, again, this goes back to, what is the proposal specifically? And we're at a 63 now. We get to a 70, which is kind of a, you know, I was embarrassed to get grades like that in school. So, to get it to an 80 or better, what is the actual cost? And would that get us actual repaving? Why do, you know, I mean, another tar and gravel solution is just kind of a waste of money. It didn't hold up more than a year or two when it was done the last time. So, why aren't we looking at a more cost-effective, long-term solution? And if we are, what is the cost of that, is my other question? Thank you.
Ed Turner?
Thank you. Ed Turner from Stratford Court. Been here well over 30 years now. I forget just how much. I'm asking you to table this proposal tonight, and give us more time to study it, to get clarification on it, to get input from the citizens on it. And here's why. Number one, I cringed every time one of you referred to this as a fee imposed on West Valley. This is not a fee, it's a tax. It's not imposed on West Valley, it's imposed on us, okay? And that's just, let's just call it what it is and deal with it openly. I think you have clarified some of the questions I had tonight. I appreciate that. I'm glad to hear that this tax, if we do it, is going to be dedicated to roads, because I didn't get that out of the staff report. But I think there are still a number of issues. When I first read the staff report, it looked like you were going to triple my garbage fee. That was a bit of a shock. Turns out, that's not the case. But I still don't fit into your table. So, there's something that's still ambiguous there. A third issue is just the justification for this whole thing. It is not apparent to me that we absolutely have to do this in order to repair the roads. The roads are in awful shape, no question about that. To your credit, you put together a five-year plan that's going to make some significant improvements, and that five-year plan's funded. So, why do we need to do this additional tax? And we have clearly under-invested in road maintenance for the last decade or more. But the tax money you're going to get, that I saw up there from the gas taxes and such, is what, a little over $300,000? So, it's four and a half times what you've been spending on the roads for the last 10 years, and that ought to be, I mean, it seems to me like that ought to be enough. So, do we really need to, you know, to do this thing? If you were proposing it for a single year to offset the drain on the general fund, I think that would be a different matter. But this thing goes on forever, and it has automatic increases built into it every year. So, that's a concern. And the other issue is just the timing of this whole thing. It came out Friday night. People have, I don't think, people have, the whole community have had time to even become aware of it, much less gain any insight into how it's really going to impact them, and had opportunities to provide input. So, what we're doing tonight is great, but I would ask you to just table it for now, conduct some community outreach, let's get clarifications done, and let people have an opportunity to really look at this and come to a conclusion, provide input to you guys on what to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Felipe Alves? Okay.
Thank you.
Skip Pearson?
I'll be real quick. I come maybe once every 15, 20 years. Mr. Mayor and council members and all, especially our new city manager, I'd like to welcome you. I was at a pre-Christmas dinner in Los Gatos, and I was informed that you were the new city manager, and it made our meal. I was having dinner with Mary and her husband back there in row four. And the reason I came today was because Desmond Johnson and I put in over half of Becky Lane back in around 1980. And at the time, Desmond and I were splitting a property at the end of Becky Lane. There was another developer at the time that put in almost half of it. And before that, it was a dirt road. The city put forth their requirements. We put in the street and the curbs, new six-inch water line, fire hydrants, all brand-new sewer there, it was all septic tank before. We bore all the cost of it, and we were told at the time that when we were done meeting the city specifications, we would, the city would take over and maintain the street. That was 38 years ago, and to my knowledge, the city has never done anything, any improvement whatsoever on Becky Lane. So, my question is, is Becky Lane included in the future street improvements? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Terry McCarthy?
So, I have some questions, I guess, to get answered at the end, and I have a couple of comments too. I mean, one is on the West Valley. Just finding out tonight that the fee was going into the general fund and not into the capital fund, that seems inappropriate to me, and that that money should go directly into the capital fund and be used for this project. And two, if the usage has gotten a lot higher, then why aren't we negotiating the fee that we're getting paid? And I don't know that much about the contract, how long it is. Maybe that takes a while to do that, but still, that's something I would truly consider doing. And of course, there are other trucks that are using the properties too, that, like UPS is an example, and I don't know how much of an impact those kind of trucks have on the... Two, I was looking at the budget, and it's very hard to see, and along with one of the other gentlemen, I think it'd be very helpful if you did a five-year plan that really broke out the line items that affected this. And because in the capital budget, I mean, the line construction, is that just roads? Or is that also plumbing and other things? And it would give everybody a better idea what those actual costs were, so we could see. Second thing in the budget, traffic safety and road impact fees dropped from $194,000 to $90,000 in this year's budget. And that seems like a big drop, and that was money that would have been in the capital fund that would have been offsetting this. So, I'm not sure why that change took place. That's a question, it'd be helpful to understand that. And then, there was a comment about the state matching 12 and a half to 20% for the funds that we're collecting. Is that shown in the capital budget anyplace or not? Because I don't see that line item, and that would be helpful to have the, show those monies in here, so we get a clear picture, you know, what we expect to require and so on, was expected to come in, and also what we're expecting to spend. That'd give us a much clearer picture, I think, of what we really need. And I do, and I think the answer was, but I wanted to be sure, that this fee, if we wind up, if the council winds up passing it, is absolutely directed to the capital fund. I mean, what's the California state pass things that were supposed to be used for certain things, and then it goes into a general fund and is used for something else? And last, I think a two-year reserve is very high. And I just, you know, unless somebody can really validate the variation that you're going to have in revenue over that period of time, that seems like a pretty high reserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jeremy Wire?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I appreciate being able to come before you. Live on 15533 Caven Lane for a number of years, over 40. And just back about 40 years ago, Caven Lane was totally reconstructed, and then about every five years or so, oil screenings or oil and fine gravel would be put on as a wearing surface, and that worked pretty good. It does seem like about the last 10 years, we haven't seen any maintenance like that. So, I guess a point I would like to make is, it seemed like, I'm not pining for the old days, but it seemed like the city had a maintenance program that worked pretty well. And I think it was funded primarily by the gas tax. I saw a pie chart up here that showed there's still money coming from the gas tax available to, for road improvements and maintenance. So, I guess my suggestion would be, maybe push the plan out a little bit further, take that gas tax money and apply it with some priority to, like Blanchard, which does need help, it's in a poorly drained area, and certainly, as we saw from the photo there, it has a shoulder that's nothing but mud. So, yeah, it could be improved. So, I think that would be my thought. Give this more consideration, because the plan as it is now, I'm not particularly in favor of it. One more point before I leave here. Certainly, I kind of hate to see one group being picked on, waste management people. I mean, there's been a lot of construction around our area, heavy cement trucks, all kinds of construction equipment that certainly don't do the roads very much good. So, I think just trying to pick on one entity may not really be the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Marshall Wire? Okay, great, thank you. Patrick Burns? Burns? Okay.
My name is Patrick Burns. I'm speaking for Marilyn Martin at 18340 Lexington Drive. She's here in the wheelchair back here. We're next-door neighbors to the Shiba's here, who he also spoke, and we're just wondering that if this passes, we live on a road that is on Lexington Drive, which is not maintained by the city, and that why pay that funding if we're not having any use of it? And we're just unaware of how it's going to do our road any good, or if we're not included in the maintenance from the city, then why should we be fined for it or, you know, taxed for it? And that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Pesky?
Good evening, Carol Pesky. I live right behind here, 16100 Mays Avenue. I am against this fee tax, whatever you want to call it. I just wanted to put that out. I sit and I watch the construction going on in our neighborhood. Last week, we had a number of construction trucks coming, filling foundations. They have to put out their arms, they are such heavy trucks. They really, I could see the level of the street going down as they were sitting there. This construction is going on in our community at an outrageous pace, and I just want to make sure that we know the impact that those trucks are having on our roads. There was another huge construction around the corner on Andrews Street. We're just surrounded by it right now, and we can see the wear and tear on our roads. I have a few questions, and I'm not even sure if this is the time to address them. Should I wait till the end for questions, or should I...
Why don't you go ahead and put your questions out? We're taking notes, and we'll answer them all at the end.
I wondered, what is our criteria for street repair? And I apologize if that's out there somewhere in our public information somewhere, but who determines that our streets need repairing? That the street, that the neighbors in the street want the streets repaired? Is it a public safety issue? That would be my first question. And $130,000, I mean, if this is what I hear, that this fee tax is going to collect, that seems like a drop in the bucket compared to these numbers that we're talking about and the numbers that we have in our coffers right now. Seems like an insignificant amount, and so, I can't understand why we can't just cover the $130,000 with what we have. How long is the West Valley contract? I don't know how long this West Valley consortium is booked for. I would be all in favor of renegotiating that. I would love to have composting in our community. I'd be 100% for that, and I'm not sure how long this contract is lasting. So, those are my questions.
Thank you. Robert Masley? Okay, great, thanks.
Robert Masley, mayor, council. Lovely community here. Been here 20 years. Items on this. If we're going to go ahead and do this, let's do it with curbs. Looking at the nature of the damage and the capital versus the maintenance expense, it seems that curbs are mechanically prudent. Perhaps that's an assessment rather than a fee or tax. Second, we're seeing, pardon me, we're seeing, anecdotally, on our street, at least three times the construction traffic that we're seeing in Green Valley. And the construction traffic, I'm not counting, is contractor trucks, cement trucks, paver, and brick haulers, heavy stuff. Yet, in the financial information, we're seeing one and a half times the fee to be collected from refuse trucks that we're collecting from construction trucks. So, those two together would seem that the revenue that we're expecting is 5X misproportioned toward refuse collection. Next, it is interesting to note that we are suggesting a review period of 10 years on a program to be completed in five years. It would seem appropriate to make the... It would seem appropriate to make the review commensurate with the duration of the program, and that the fee or tax, if we decide to go with it, ends with the program. Otherwise, this is a continuing and potentially escalating tax on the citizenry. I second the comments on the capital fund versus the general fund. Okay, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Amir Hadid.
Amir Hadid with the Road in Monteserino. I'm going to say things that have already been echoed by my fellow citizens. One of the things, I think, why are we rushing into this? We get this memo last week, and then you put your details on Friday, and you give it to us in print today, we don't really, we haven't had a chance to digest it. I think we ought to be given more time. And I can see that we have, our roads are really in bad shape. And I have questions for you. Who actually, do we have a scheduled maintenance, like your teeth cleaning every six months or something? And also, who supervises these repairs? Because I see repairs in our road, when we go on Ridgecrest, there's a pothole. They fix it, a few months later, the same pothole appears. I don't know who sanctions or approves their repairs that are happening. On Ridgecrest, they fixed the road for a little bit, and the next thing, it's all full of water when it starts raining. I mean, of course, this is going to degrade our roads. We really need to look into prevention, rather than doing all this, waiting years and then spend a lot more money trying to fix it. I have a proposal, if we were to continue with this idea, is that we should use the general fund, see how it goes, and see what happens, how much short are we, sort of, we can actually add some, this recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Linda Peram, 15915 Viewfield Road, mayor, council, staff. First, yes, I am opposed to the recommendation at this point, and I have several reasons. Some of these questions may have been answered, I'll just go through my list very quickly. One, inadequate notice was given to the residents, there are too many unanswered questions, and we're, of course, echoing that today. Fees and taxes have already been paid for road maintenance. The proposal that you're suggesting we add, if I'm reading it correctly, is four to five times more than what the other three cities are paying. Why are we paying that much more? If I'm incorrect, then please let me know that. Do all homeowners pay this fee? You say it's going to be collected by West Valley Collection, but not all homeowners contract West Valley Collection services. So what about those people? Do they not have to pay for the road services? I'm aware of a tenant of mine who had no trash collection. That's why I say this firsthand, this is not hearsay. I know it for a fact, he was my tenant. I called City Hall, City Hall told me, you are not, it is not mandatory to use West Valley Collection for your garbage service. So does that mean I can opt out of my trash collection and take it to my dumpster at my commercial building? Then does that mean I do not have to pay the fee? Do other municipalities use our roads by West Valley Collection? And if they do, do they then reimburse us for the time those vehicles are being used for their services? What percentage of cumulative maintenance monies have been used to date for road maintenance? Until these and other questions have been raised, that have been raised, are answered satisfactorily, I am strongly opposed to this imposed fee or tax. And I suggest that we postpone any decisions until people can be more informed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Lynn Peram.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. So it appears, just sitting here listening to the meeting, you guys are being pretty good to us. You're talking about something you have not had a chance to think too much about yet, and it's kind of new on the agenda. I'm not going to ask this gentleman to go back to, like, maybe slide number two, but we took some action as a town on February 17, and two more actions in April of 17, and another action on May of 17. And at the end of that, we came to the conclusion that by putting in bike paths, doing this, that, and the other, we're probably going to have to impose a tax on the town. And then we had one of the worst rains in history. It reminds me of Governor Brown continuing to put in his high-speed rail when the Oroville Dam is failing. We need to declare a state of war on this. We ought to look at those four things, maybe they all go on hold. Because I don't think we approved them so that we could then raise taxes. You know, as a Californian, I don't need any more taxes. So, now, gentlemen, I think, ladies, excuse me, I think we're a very well-managed town. We have, I think we're one of the few towns around here that have no unfunded liabilities. That's really great, and I knew without being told that we had a balance sheet that had $6 million on it. I want no more taxes. So what do I think? What is the cost to fix the roads today? In other words, we haven't taken care of the roads, we behaved rather incompetently as a town. What does it cost to fix the roads today? And then what does it cost to maintain the roads? We should be able to see both of those items broken out before we make a final decision. Then we could pay for this with our, off our balance sheet. Now, we all read the Wall Street Journal every morning. We're at a very low interest rate in the country right now. If we went out and borrowed money, or if we used a bond, we're going to see three or four rate increases. Before you know it, the money we have in the bank would be earning rate money faster than the cost of the bond. So it's a good time to go long on a loan to take care of this. I would much prefer that than to have somebody impose a new tax on me, because we could set a schedule to pay the bond off and have done with it, right? We just don't need any more taxes. Now, I have the same question my wife did. If I, can I opt out of this? Because as far as I'm concerned, I'm from New Hampshire, I'm perfectly happy to take my garbage to the dump every week, or at least take it to somebody else's dumpster. Anyway. So my personal opinion is, I'd rather borrow money, go long when interest rates are low, take out a bond, fix our streets. What does it cost to maintain them on an annual basis? Develop a war plan. It seems to me the streets don't need to be repaired anywhere that we, unless we put a curb in. We should do the thing that, we don't have to do this again, right? We should fix it once and for all by thinking about fixing it right the first time. So that's all I have to say about this. From my point of view, I'd rather borrow money than see a tax. I just can't stand any more taxes.
All right, thank you very much. Felipe, do you want to come up now? Felipe, would you like to come up now?
I guess you all know who I am, I've been here a lot lately. I'm Filipa Elvis, I live on Blanchard Drive, and I've lived here since 1972. And I've seen a lot of stuff going on, things that I'm not very fond about. As I hear all these people speaking, I realize that this has come about way too fast, because they don't know what's going on. And I'm not sure we know what's going on. For one thing, it's quick money. And I'm not sure we need quick money with $6 million in our coffers. The garbage trucks are not really the cause of the damage to the streets. There's everything, there's lots of stuff, including the construction that goes on in Monteserino. It's a, the real problem is the lack of annual upkeep in our streets. It's been going on for several years, which you're all aware of. So don't blame the garbage trucks, that's probably just an excuse. They may be part of the problem, but they're not the entire problem at all. There's a great lack of clarity about the curbs and setbacks, because a lot of these people don't understand that you're only going to do the center of the streets. The setbacks and the curbs are going to be the responsibility of the citizens who own the property adjacent to the street. I bet was here when that was explained before. The paving improvements, it was recommended at that time, and I don't know if that was in your suggestion, I think it was, that the curbs and the setbacks would be the responsibility of the property owners. And it would be wise and economically better for them if the city included those improvements, and then the owners would pay the city back. So if people think that the curbs are going to be put in from your money that you're spending to do the center of the roads, they're mistaken. They're going to pay for that, one way or the other. They're going to pay for it because they're going to do, hire their own contractors, or, more wisely and more soundly economically, they're going to let the city do it, and then they're going to pay for, pay the city. And I'm quite sure that that was part of the proposal, yes. There's a lot of lack of transparency about what's going on, and I really object to that. In this entire proposal, it came about way too fast. Any information about it was absolutely buried in the council report, and you would have to have an engineering degree to master getting into that information. I had some people help me get into it. My neighbors, who said they wouldn't come because they felt you'd already made up your mind and it was useless to come, helped me find this information. There's not enough information about who pays for what, or exactly what is included in street repairs. There's really no need for this fee, it's just easy money. We have $6 million in the general fund, and we could use some of that to catch up, and that's what we're doing, is playing catch-up to repair our streets. I'm urging you to put this off, this vote, tonight, because we're not ready, and it is not clear to the majority of the people who live here that this is even going on, let alone the major details of what's going on. I think that we need to notify the citizens with more detail, and more clarity, and more transparency before you move one step farther in this. There's enough, and by the way, since I live on Blanchard, I know the hullabaloo about that. There, I think that Blanchard is the trial street, and that's already been established. They're just trying out this on Blanchard to see how it goes, and you've already established a committee to work on the streets. Give them a chance, let's see what's going on, what they come up with, before you vote tonight. So there's really no compelling need for this money at this point. You could wait another year, you could wait two years, or more. The garbage company asked, I understand, for a commitment soon, but that commitment is not required soon. They just want a few months, anytime you ask for it, they want it a few months in advance. Let's see. Oh, the evaluation period, 10 years is way too much for an evaluation period. Two years is ample, three years is okay. But to have this evaluated in 10 years is ridiculous. I hope you hear what we're all saying. Back off, don't vote, do it later, after everybody knows what's really going on.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I have the last card right here for Stephen Jackson. If anybody else wanted to speak, if they could bring a blue card up. Oh, okay, then Sean, you're right up after. And then, did anybody else, I see somebody else standing up, and a hand back here? Sure, if you could come over and grab the card and pass it on up. Okay, Mr. Jackson, go ahead.
Thank you, Steve Jackson, Grandview Avenue. Lived here about 45 years now. First of all, I apologize, I was a little late, so I didn't hear or see some of your initial presentations, but what I was looking for, when I first read, whatever I was able to read, that we need some scientific evidence that the garbage truck damages the predominant ideology of the problems with the streets. Has this really been sci, I'm asking a question, I'll wait for you to answer. Where is the science, where is the evidence that the garbage trucks are the major, predominant force in causing the problems with the streets? As has been mentioned multiple times, there are other trucks. There's also cable installations. I know after our street was paved, cable came in and dug up the entire quarter of the street, and it looks that same way for now about 10 years. And there are, there's also sewer issues, there's a lot of other construction and work on the street, and it's not just the garbage trucks. I don't like the idea of claiming that it's garbage trucks unless you have evidence for that. The maintenance of the streets is going to have to be managed and overseen. I think there's been a terrible neglect of the streets. I jog around the streets of Monteserino, and I know I'm not causing any damage, but I noticed that what goes on with the streets, and almost from the time that they were paved over, there was almost immediate evidence for damage and digging up of the streets by, I know in particular my street, the cable people. The streets are so poorly maintained that I called the fire department because the fire hydrant markers, the blue markers that are opposite the yellow fire hydrants, are missing in many, on many of the streets. So I assume that that's a public safety issue, but no one seemed to mind that, that many of the blue markers on the streets were not there, were missing, or largely destroyed. Finally, I think that it's inappropriate for the council to bring, to give us such a short time interval. The citizens have to be informed and be able to think about it, have to be able to talk about it, discuss about it, the issues amongst themselves. And I'm asking you, is there a city regulation or ordinance that states the time interval between someone comes up with an idea, especially when it comes to taxing, or whatever you want to, feeding our citizens, and the time that is going to be considered by the council? The amount of time that you allowed the citizens to think about this is far too short and inappropriate. I thank all the other speakers, I agree with almost all the comments that were made, and I remain opposed to this, it ought to be tabled.
All right, thank you. Okay, Sean Lutold.
Thank you. I'd actually like to expand on what was just said, and that is, I think that this is an opportunity that the council and staff need to really look at. I think that this is indicative of the same type of problem we saw last time on my issue with the church construction, and that is, there's a real systemic problem here. It comes off to the citizens looking like arrogance, because city staff does a hard job, puts a lot of energy in, and gives a report, and we get it on Friday, to come to a meeting on Tuesday with a recommendation that you pass, and people don't even show up feeling like they have not got an opportunity to speak with you. I don't think that's what you mean to do, but that's what's going on. And so I think that we need to address this example, not by tabling it for a week or two and coming back and having everybody come in and repeat the same things, we've seen that before. I think you need to look at how you handle these recommendations, getting the information to the community, and then getting the community involved, because otherwise, it just comes off as pure arrogance, that a staff report should be adopted a few days later to tax the citizens. I think there's a real question with whether this is a tax, and whether you need to put it up for the public. Sure, it's cute, they call it a fee, but this is another $100 or $200 out of our pockets. It'll never be taken away, even if it's reviewed in 10 years, the city will get addicted to the money. So let's address, first of all, the systemic problem with how staff reports, council, and the citizenry work, and then let's get the input here, and then let's figure out whether we really need this. Clearly, everyone in the room is against this, and that's your citizens talking to you. Lastly, one more point on specifics here, and that is, the staff report, and I apologize about the word choice here, I'm tired, is very shoddy. It associates the fee with the refuse pickup, and says that we're going to be... It associates the fee with the refuse pickup, and says that we're going to be taxed the $7 per refuse container, one-time tax. But that doesn't take into account all of the trips for all of the recycling and the other, and the yard waste. So it's not appropriately associated with the impact on the streets. It's just done wrong, and on a legal basis, that's improper. Morally, sure, we like the refuse collection, but you can't say, we need $130,000 for, for the pickup, and then put it only on the trash pickup. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Silverstein?
Sorry, I was late coming in, and I was listening to what some of these others have said, and I have not, I wasn't here for your presentation, I apologize for that. But first of all, I'm opposed to what I've heard so far, based on what I've heard. I'm not going to reiterate what others have said, but it seems that any decision right now would be premature, listening to the thoughts and ideas suggested here tonight. And, oh, if we are talking about the, the company that serves us, maybe we should renegotiate either with them or with another one, because it seems that Los Gatos has better service than we do, and they're just our neighbors. And one other thing is, if we are considering contractors, I think we should carefully consider who we're going to get, because the people that did the sidewalks on Dave's Avenue were really not good. I was very unhappy with them, and they were just horrible contractors. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Okay, George Shannon? And this is the last card I have, if anybody else wanted to come up and speak.
So my name's George Shannon, I live next door, and I got a letter, I think Thursday, basically, not Friday, and it said you had to clarify your questions. So I want to answer from the council, whether this is a fee or a tax, and where is that defined? Because if you want a legal challenge to it, you had to bring it up tonight. Is that correct?
We'll, we'll answer all the questions at the end of the...
Okay. And then number two is that if this is whatever, if you end up collecting it, that it only goes to road funds, not to build your empire here that you've been, Taj Mahal you've been talking about. And I'd like that clarified as well. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing now and bring it back to the desk. And I think we have a lot of questions first, and Mr. City Manager?
Why don't I try to answer a number of them, and then Jim can catch ones that I can't, and the city attorney can speak to the ones that are more legal in, in nature. I am relatively new here, and I, this is my six-month anniversary, and I do want to say that I think it's absolutely awesome that this many people have showed up. I never anticipated this when I started six months ago, and I'm extremely happy that all of you have come tonight, and I really appreciate your input, and I'm sure the council does, too. So let me just start with a couple of the questions and see if I can get started. One was about how does this, if the fee were enacted, how would it apply to residents on private streets? Now, the, it is true that the, this would not change the status of persons who live on private streets from, you know, one that the city now takes responsibility for, from one that is a responsibility of the property owners that front it. That would not change. But the fee would apply to individuals that do live on private streets, with the idea that this money that goes into the fund has to be used for street repair and maintenance of all the city's streets. And since the vast majority, and we did verify this with the, with the, with, yeah, the consulting firm that assisted with this effort, the idea is that the vehicles themselves travel over long distances over all the city's streets, even before they reach those properties that are private streets. So the majority of the damage that is done to city's streets is still, you know, considerable, even if you don't include the small portion that is on the private property. So it would still apply to individuals who live on private streets. So that was one. I'm gonna let Jim speak to the issue about curb and gutter and the importance of that. There were some questions around the road impact and the, the balance of that fund. As I, as I, we noted in our presentation, there is, the city does collect a construction impact fee, and has been doing for many years, and that...
I just wanted to ask a quick question about the construction impact fee. How do we assign that fee?
That, that fee is assessed on the valuation of the work being done at an individual... Is my time up? That fee is assessed on construction activity based on the valuation of the property. So there is a certain percentage of each $1,000 worth of work. So whenever a property owner is, say, making an addition or building a new house, the city assigns a valuation to that work, and then it is a percentage of that evaluation. So the city's been collecting that for many fees, and it is true that the city was, you know, holding that in reserves and not expending it. However, with the current city budget that the council adopted, the, I believe all of that that had been collected, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, has now been assigned to the first year's pavement management program. It was almost $750,000.
Correct.
Yeah. So we are, you know, while we've been collecting that money, and we've not been expending it for, you know, its intended purpose, we are, we have now moved all of it into the pavement management program for this fiscal year. And, and we would, of course, keep collecting that fee, and it, of course, you know, would be, help us to use to do additional street maintenance and repair. And there was, there was question around, what, the money's collected for this, from this fee, and how they can be spent. It is true that the fee goes directly through the bills of the residents, and then would be collected by West Valley Collection and Recycling, but they return it in its entirety to us, and it must be used for street maintenance and repairs. It cannot be used for any other purpose, so it couldn't just be dropped into the general fund and, you know, used for any other sorts of expenses. And then there were some questions around the, what we call the pavement management program in general, and who determines which streets need repairs. Many, many of the folks in the audience and others that may be listening online, you know, may not be aware that the city, and Jim did talk a little bit about this, but I'm just going to repeat it again. The city did embark on having a, a report done, which he has a copy of there, and I do believe is available online, and it's a pavement management program. What they did was they went around the entire city and looked at all of our streets, made a determination of the condition of the pavement. They assign grades of optimum, fair, or optimum good, fair, poor, and...
Very poor.
Very poor. So they do, it, it's all very, it's all very scientific, and it's the same method that's used anywhere else in the state of California. And then within that program, they, they assign the, the condition of the streets in general, and then they put in recommendations in this report to saying that if you want to, you know, bring all the streets up to a higher level, say, from fair, which we currently are at, to good, this is how much money you would need to spend. If you want to go from fair to...
Optimum.
Optimum, this is how much money you want to spend. And as I think I noted a little bit in the very beginning, to get from fair to optimum was a significant investment that really was beyond the city's ability to, to fund. However, to go from fair to good was within the realm of possibility, and the council ultimately agreed to do that. And so what they did was they set up a five-year program, this is the very first year, and made a determination of how much money would be spent in any one year. And from that, we've started on the very first-year program, which will be the largest initial one, and staff has already worked towards making a determination of which streets should move forward with the first-year program, the type of treatment. We're already putting all the information together so that the city can put this out to bid to, for contractors. So we're, we should be moving forward with that in the next few months. We will be having a informational item to the council to give them a little more detail of where we are moving forward with, with the first year's pavement improvement program. But overall, the city does, has, has set, and the council has, you know, given us direction with their budget approval, what they would like for us to do over the next five years. We also, as may have been mentioned tonight, we have, the council approved the creation of a Better Streets Commission, and they will most likely become more involved in this overall pavement management effort. And so it will allow another venue for folks like yourself and any other person who's interested to follow along more closely as we incorporate, you know, new funding and move, move forward with this larger pavement management program. There was a question about the West Valley Collection and Recycling contract. We determined that today that the contract has six more years on it.
It expires February 28th, 2024.
And there was a question about exempting yourself from the fee. Only persons who would be exempt, only residents who'd be exempt from the fee if it were enacted would be those who opt out of the collection service from West Valley Collection and Recycling. And citizens can do that. You can, you know, take your own waste, recycling, and yard waste, and you can, you know, take it to another location and remove it yourself. So that is a possibility.
Legally, of course. We don't want you dumping it in your neighbor's yard.
Yes, that's true. There was some question along the lines of the city's only responsible for the travel lanes in terms of its upkeep, and that is true. What's considered the frontage, which in many places in the city consists of rolled curbs, what's called a valley gutter, which is basically a very flat V-shaped, curved in essence. Some places it's just a regular concrete curb, but other places, there's nothing. It's just basically the pavement ends, and there's either landscaping, or it could be decomposed granite, or, or just dirt. And the city is not responsible for that portion outside of the travel lane. And we have recognized that it is important, in many situations, that those improvements need to be made if we're going to spend money on repaving the streets. And that is very true, and, and this is something Jim has taught me a lot in, in respect to this, because I didn't know a whole lot about this before I started. And so we have recognized that as important, and we've already started having a conversation with the council with that. It included the Blanchard Drive pilot project. We brought them a informational item to bring them up to date where we were with, with the pilot improvement project. And we, you know, we as staff made it clear to the council that there needs to be some mechanism for the city to be able to install these improvements where needed. Otherwise, it is very true, as many, as a number of folks pointed out, and as the council knows, you know, our investment in repaving without making those frontage improvements is not a good investment. And so the council has directed us to look at possible ways of, of funding those frontage improvements, and the Blanchard Drive folks were here and know well. One of the discussions was an assessment district, and one of the, one or two of the speakers did, did speak to that. So we, we are moving forward with bringing more information to the council about assessment districts in terms of paying for these frontage improvements outside of the travel lanes. And I think I got a number of those, and I'm gonna see if Jim can chime in here with some of the ones I may have missed.
I'll give it a, a good shot, and I'll save several of these for our city attorney. The pavement management plan that the city council has endorsed and approved year one, and will have to continue to approve each ensuing year, is a five-year plan, but by no means is that the end of the, the problem. They have endorsed staff to proceed with a $2.2 million five-year expenditure. As I indicated earlier, it's, it's, it's a $5 million problem today, which would require over a million dollars per year. So any funds collected through, say, a general fund transfer, raising the road impact fee on developers, the collection of a refuse impact fee, the additional state gas taxes, local sales tax, our goal in following the council's direction is to apply all of those funds into a very robust, organized, systematic roadway improvement program. And what's very important, I think, was one of the best actions that the council took was they did form a Better Streets Commission last month. It's the first time we've had a commission that will be focused on our streets, walking areas, issues like lighting, stop signs, parking, and paving, and definitely drainage. I have worked a lot in the last few months with the city manager and the city council, and particularly the very cordial meetings we've had with the Blanchard Drive residents on the importance of some organized manner in which to carry the runoff on their street. If the city were to invest, what this report suggests, $180,000 approximately to repave the middle of Blanchard Drive, approximately 26 to 30 feet driving lanes, we would not be getting the full life expectancy out of such a major expenditure like that unless we had organized drainage systems on both sides. Blanchard Drive residents, by a show of hands at a community meeting unanimously endorsed, looking at ways in which they could participate in putting the improvements in, in a very cost-effective way. The improvements I'm talking about are, are new standards, curbs, valley gutters, rolled curbs, asphalt berms, et cetera. At the same time, the city attorney has advised us that while our municipal code makes property owners responsible, I hope I'm saying this right, responsible for the maintenance and repair of your curb and sidewalk if they exist, and gutter improvements if they exist, once they are in, we are not authorized to compel you to put them in or to install them. So we are at a situation in our city, looking at Blanchard Drive, at look, are there ways in which the city could participate, possibly through raising additional revenues, and work cooperatively with every street going forward to see if it's a candidate for some curb and gutter and drainage improvements along with the paving? So yes, I'm a big fan and a big supporter of the drainage improvements, and with those looked at strategically over the years, we will maximize our investments, no matter where the funds come from. So it is not just a five-year problem. It's a, it's a long-range problem, but we have a five-year snapshot. As far as the table not fitting the, the exact billings that some of you are experiencing, we received all of these figures from West Valley Collection and Recycling. We'll be glad to talk to any of you about your particular situation. I don't obviously have copies of individual bills, but we would be glad to look at, at that further. Streets like Becky Lane that, in your correspondence, have not been adequately maintained for 38 years, I think I read, streets like that definitely go onto the list. Streets like Cave and Lane that are relatively in good condition, if you look at the rest of the city. In 1954, that street was built, and it included rolled curbs. And it's because of those rolled curbs that are confining the, the asphalt and allowing for drainage, it's why that street, which is 60, 70 years old, is still in such good shape, along with the fact that somebody in years past had a regular sealing program to keep the tracks from expanding. That's what we're talking about here. Keep fixing our best streets so they don't deteriorate, and then find creative ways to finance the more expensive ones and get the drainage improvements in at the same time. In my research, all of the fees that have been spent have been spent out of the capital fund, not the operating fund. I think when we say the general fund, they go into a, a pot of funds, and each year the city council adopts a general, an operating budget and a capital budget, and that's where I've seen the, the funds expended from is out of the capital budget. There's been fluctuations noted in, in revenue and expenses, and I, I, I'm not able to address those tonight, but I will be glad to refer to those going forward. On matching funds, the report does indicate that many cities use their reserve funds or other pots of money to go after grants, to, to secure outside funds. An example of that would be, there's a lot of revenue at the state for improvements around schools, but much of those competitive grants require a 12 and 1/2 to 20%, 25% local match. So if you wanted to do a $200,000 project, you might have to have $25,000 ready to go locally to, to leverage 175,000 outside funding sources. These funds could be used for those types of grants. I will say to all of you, there's very few grants available for residential streets at the state, regional, and federal level. They're almost always geared towards schools... They're almost always geared towards schools, arterials, transit lines. Even bike lanes are not normally striped on residential streets. Yes, we now have a pedestrian and bicycle safety plan, and it talks a lot about things that we can do, like lighting and improving our line of sight at corners to make it safer to ride a bike or to walk at night. But it doesn't necessarily, actually, it doesn't recommend any new striping on residential streets that I'm aware of. We touched on private roads. It's our city engineer, who's another contract employee, but we do have a city engineer who has recommended the 16 streets that we're proceeding with this year. And she is also the city engineer that will apply the inspection to the project as well as inspection to utility cuts when they occur, when she is aware of them, aware of them. And that's always a challenge. We talked about all these heavy trucks, and we are looking at the road impact fee and to see how adequate that, that is and when it was last adjusted. But we know that these outriggers for the heavy trucks and the tremendously heavy paverstones and bricks that are being offloaded by forklifts, we know those have an impact, and we have to really, I think aggressively, take a look to see if we're up to speed on, on that particular fee. Those, those fees vary based upon the economy. When there's a lot of construction going, they bring in, for instance, up to $80,000. During a recessionary period, I think we had some conversations earlier that those fees can drop significantly. A fee on every household in the city in comparison would be a balanced, comprehensive, predictable fee that could be looked at every year as, as almost like a guarantee for a programmatic maintenance. We talked about residents being able to opt out, and that's, that's been confirmed by the agency, I mean, the West Valley. Other municipalities using our roads are, it's, it's a kind of a quid pro quo or a kind of, it's a reciprocal situation, really, when you think about it. Probably every one of the trips that we make, when we leave our house to go to school, buy a product, or go to our work, we're using other streets in those cities as they may be using ours. So we're not looking to oppose, impose fees in that manner. Bonds versus loan rates, we're open, and the city council has advised us to look at other ways to fund our street programs over a long-term, with long-term solutions in mind. And we are particularly right now in the middle of investigating the procedures of assessment districts and, and how, how those procedures take place, the cost to even do assessment districts, and the added costs that might be involved with paying for projects with outside engineering reports and attorney's fees and other lengthy procedures involving many consultants versus just a straight fee, and to avoid a lot of the overhead charges that might come with assessment districts. The science of the study is, was not my work. It's a very recognized consulting firm that has done work like this for many cities in Northern California. We contracted with them in July. They completed their work October 25th. Their work is included in the staff report. We all know that you had a very short amount of time to read it and digest that technical material that's in there. But they, they have indicated, using a traffic index and equivalent vehicle, single axle rates that are underneath these big trucks versus passenger vehicles, that it's about a 31% damage factor on our streets based upon the types of mix of trucks and other traffic that we have in our city. For instance, in Los Gatos, they estimate the garbage trucks in Los Gatos have a lower, lower impact because there's many more large trucks, like serving Safeway and Netflix and, and stores like Home Depot and Costco's that exist in some of our other cities. So we think the science is sound, and we're certain, certainly willing to discuss that with any of you that would like more installation on that or information on that. The blue markers, many fire districts replace those themselves. We'll be glad to talk to Central Fire to confirm that if it's the city's responsibility to get the fire, the blue pavement markers adjacent to the fire hydrants will do that. If it's their responsibility, we'll ask that they prioritize that. It may not be a perfect science, but the, the science used has based the impact on the, on the heaviest loads that are picked up, and that's the solid waste. So the, I think, the way we can justify this is it's on one part of the, the load, the solid waste. We know how much that is on an annualized basis, and that's the methodology that was used. And maybe it's beneficial or not, but the, the lighter loads, like recyclables, or in many cases, branches and grass trip, clippings, those have not been included in this analysis, just, just the solid waste can. And yes, all of these fees would be dedicated to roads, not to other capital projects like plumbing or building improvements here at City Hall. I think I'll stop there, and I probably missed a few.
All right, thanks. Do we have any legal questions that you were able to answer?
Yep. So a couple of things. One on the, a question was raised about the difference. Why is it different between Monta Serrano versus the other jurisdictions within the JPA, Campbell, Saratoga, and Los Gatos? And I think Jim touched on that, but really it has to do with our type of streets and the impact on those, because residential streets are built to a lower standard, so they're more heavily damaged by these heavy trucks. And also, the, just the ratio of heavy trucks that we have. In Monta Serrano, we don't have commercial uses, so we don't have a lot of the heavy trucks that you would see in Saratoga, Campbell, and Los Gatos going to their commercial businesses. So we don't have that. We just have residential. I think Jim did talk also about the vehicle impact fee imposed on development. We are looking at that, whether or not that needs to be adjusted. That's another, another tool that we're looking at, the ability to do that. The JPA structure, I think it's, it is sort of an unknown entity. Not a lot of people are aware that it exists. It is a separate legal entity that was formed by the four jurisdictions to manage the solid waste contract. It is a binding contract that's in effect until 2024, and under that contract, we, the hauler does have the right to pass on certain charges. This is a fee. It is not a tax. It is a fee on the hauler for the benefit that they are getting for operating a business within our city. It's proportionally based on the benefit that they're receiving. It's related to their business that's being generated within the city. It is a, it is a fee on the company. It is not a tax on our residents. The HF and H report, Jim did touch on that. They are experts in their field. They have done these reports up and down the state of California. They did do the reports for our neighboring jurisdictions back in 2009, and they did look at the impacts of garbage vehicles versus other and did determine it was a 31%. So they are not the major contributor to the damage to our streets, but they are the 31 point something percent, which is how the fee was calculated at the 130,000. We talked about the, so the impact fee, it is charged based on the impact caused to roads. Therefore, it is restricted. It can only be used on the roads, as opposed to the franchise fee, and so that may have gotten a little confused. The franchise fee that the city receives is a general fund revenue that can be used really for any purpose, but these fees for the impact fee would be restricted to street improvements only. I think that's it.
Okay, great. Just so we can make sure that everybody got their questions answered, did anybody have any questions that they heard during the public hearing that they'd like to get an answer for? Yes, councilmember standing.
If we do not act upon this resolution this evening, that does not slow down the project that we've previously approved. Is that correct?
I have. The Blanchard Drive and the pavement management program?
Yes, yes, the five-year program.
It, it, well, let's see. It does not affect this budget cycle, but it would, we, you know, the council's gonna have to make a determination. If we stick to the pavement management program as it's been outlined and the council directed us to, for the next fiscal year, we would have to, you know, make up additional revenues which could potentially come from the general fund or other sources.
Okay, thank you.
And just another issue related to the timing of this. The rates for the solid waste collection are established by the hauler, West Valley Collection and Recycling. They calculate those rates in the spring based on the direction they're given by the JPA, which includes the amount of the vehicle impact fee and others. And then those fees are approved, are ratified by the board in May. So we do need to let them know one way or the other in the next month or two if we want it to be included in the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018.
Anybody else have a question that didn't get answered? Okay, I had, I had a couple. Somebody had mentioned UPS, FedEx trucks and things like that. What kind of impact do they have on our roads?
Pretty negligible. They, they look big, but they're not heavy. They're not carrying the types of loads. Their axle distribution and their, their dual tires usually in the back help distribute the loads that they carry. So it's, it's more than a passenger vehicle. I don't have an exact scientific answer for you, but it's, it's nowhere near the, the type of impacts that heavy, heavy refuse vehicles cause on our roads.
Okay. And then somebody else had mentioned, oh, let's see, I had it right here. The quality of the paving. You said that that's our city engineer who is, who is responsible for that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I don't think anybody mentioned that earlier. And I had one more, but did you have any? Okay. All right. So then let's just bring it back to council, and, and does anybody have any other questions for staff, or would anybody like to make a comment or a motion?
I can start? Sure. Where do I start? I made so many notes. In general, I'm in favor of doing this because I've seen the need for, for very much increased maintenance over the last couple of years. The city is really, really, has really fallen behind a lot in the last 10 years, or maybe longer. So we need to catch up. And we're sort of taking a shortcut by adding money from the general fund in the first year, but we cannot keep that up because we have this policy that we need two years of, of reserve for the, as far as the operating fund is concerned. So in general, I'm in favor of doing this. However, there were so many questions, and I agree with some of the arguments that were made. I don't think all the questions were necessarily completely answered either. So I would be in favor of tabling this for a while, maybe until the next month or the month after. I don't know if we run in danger of missing the deadline for adding the fee, as you just explained. But at least I think we should give residents a little bit more time to take a look at this.
Okay. Councilmember Turner?
Are you finished? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. I certainly support maintaining the roads, right? However, I believe that we need a compelling reason for why we need the height, given our reserve position. There are concerns. I want to give our citizens time to evaluate their positions, and we've had a lot of good input tonight. So I think that deserves some talk between us, right? And among us. And I would suggest that we don't take a vote tonight.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember standing.
I, I wanted to echo the comments of our city manager and thanking all of you for coming. This is not the first evening we've talked about road problems in the city in the last 12 months, and unfortunately, I think we've not dealt with this issue in the way we should have over the past several years. I don't, I don't think there's any question about that. But I really do want to encourage you to, to, to come and tell us what you think more often. If there is a problem on a street, a problem with fire, you know, designations in the street, tell us. We need to know about those things. And, and, because not all of us are out there every day looking at, looking to solve these problems. But this, this issue, to me, we've got sufficient funds to certainly take care of the first year, and what I would like to see us do is, is postpone, number one, but number two, to look at alternative methods of, of our ability to finance this through the reserves that we might have and any of the funds that come in, so that we at least look at a budget over what the next several years would look like to see how we might be able to fund this without having to go and end up cost, costing the residents that use the service additional monies. I think, I think, I just want, the other, only other comment that I would make is that the reason we did this in the first place was we were struggling to try to find a way to ultimately finance this, and this was one way to provide some additional funding for it. And obviously, getting the report, taking a look at it, hearing your comments is very helpful to allowing us to make a reasoned decision. But I'd like to have the opportunity to look at how, from a budget perspective, how we might be able to handle this otherwise. If we lose the first $130,000 that we might gain from this, assuming we would get all that in the first year, I think we've got enough money to fund that for going forward. So I think, you know, we may come back to this issue and want to do it, but I think let's have a, let's do it in the best way possible.
Councilmember Rogers?
Okay, first, first off, we all know our streets need to be repaired. There's no doubt about it. I'm, I'm against this also, and my, I'd like to postpone it, but I'm kind of against it because I'm not convinced that our general fund can't handle this at this point. And that's, that's pretty much my logic for, you know, until I have a good explanation. And I'm very fiscally conservative, and I do want to have a lot of money in our general fund. So I think we should come back to this, but at this point, I couldn't in full conscience vote for this, this extra fee at this point. And that's where I stand right now.
Okay, great. And I'd just like to add that one of the items that I've heard a lot about in our city is, is traffic, and I've heard about road conditions, and I've heard about speeding. And those are three items that we've really tried to attack by trying to come up with some innovative plans to, to curb speeding. We've tried to, we've already started, as has been mentioned a number of times, to Blanchard Road Project. And with the help of Jim, who's put together a terrific plan, I think you see we spent a lot of time in 2017 trying to come up with a plan to make our roads better in the city. One of the things that I don't think we did a great job on, though, was giving everybody enough time to kind of evaluate and to understand what the impact fee was. As a lot of people mentioned, they saw the announcement on Friday, and now they're here on Tuesday trying to make a decision, and that even throws in a Monday holiday. So probably a lot of you are out having a great time and not reading tran, traffic reports and PCI reports and, and PNP, five-year projections and stuff like that. I know we did post something on Nextdoor over a week ago, and I don't know how many people had a chance to see that. I did see some spirited discussion on Nextdoor, and I do appreciate that. But I would also like to advocate for holding off on this. I would like to see if we can even have a community meeting where we could have a less formal structure to, to discuss these issues with the residents, and, and then again, make sure that everybody's questions that are, that have been posed are addressed to their satisfaction. I know that we had a lot of questions, and, and I really wanted to take a, a really long amount of time to address this, so I'm sorry for the length of this particular hearing, but I hope that everybody got their questions asked. I think we answered most of them, but I still think we need to come up with better answers for a couple of other ones. So along that line, I'm also going to agree with my fellow councilmembers and, and say that we should take a look at this at another time. So are there any further comments, or would anybody like to make a motion? Or if nobody makes a motion?
Before you do, I just had Before you do, I just had a couple, a couple, a couple of ques, sort of questions, more of clarifications. I was, I was checking with the city attorney about what I would call the shelf life of the report and she seems to indicate that it could, you know, it's good for a while. So it, it won't, the, the data and the information, you know, if we need to return to it anytime relatively soon shouldn't be an issue. From what I seem to be hearing, it seems like, you know, the council ultimately, well, at least for this first year feels comfortable, you know, where we are because we obviously have the funding for that. But what I would suggest is that because we're moving into the next budget cycle that's coming up soon for the discussion, that, that, you know, that the council include, you know, how they would like to move forward with funding the difference for the next fiscal year with the budget discussion. And I, I think that would be, you know, an opportunity to sort of have a discussion on how the pavement management program will be funded in the following fiscal year and additional years beyond that with the city's overall discussion of its budget, you know, where all the different funds are coming from and where they might be dispensed. So that would be my suggestion, you know, in terms of if you would like to make a motion along those lines, that we combine it into the overall budget discussion. And it may be, you know, as the council's deciding, you know, we want to move forward with the second year and this is how we want to do it, they'll just say, you know, we want to pull funds out of the general fund. And if that's the case, then we wouldn't necessarily need to, to, you know, to enact a fee at this time or for whatever reason, you know, looking at the budget and all the components of it, you may make a decision that, well, we really do need this funding, so let's, let's go, Terry, let's go ahead and move forward and, you know, bring this back as a, as a discussion of the impact fee again. So that would be my suggestion.
Okay. All right, so without a motion, I think the item doesn't move forward from here.
Right, so if there's no motion, then it would just die. I think it would be helpful for staff though to get some direction about bringing it forward, just an overall budget discussion or a budget discussion specifically about the, the pavement management plan.
Okay, great. And I think that would be, I think that's something that I heard from my fellow council members is that we should have a little bit more information, maybe a more detailed budget, how this is going to draw out over, over the next few years. And, and I would like, I don't know, does anybody concur that we should try to have a community meeting to talk about this at a, in, in, in the near future? Or if not, we could just have another agenda item at a future council meeting?
I want to know where, to also discuss where we can get the money that doesn't come out of our general fund, like we were talking about perhaps for the construction trucks and that kind of stuff. I don't know where that fits in.
So we, you know, so the alternative, I think maybe that you're alluding to would be to, instead of just adding it into the bigger budget discussion, make this part of the discussion of the pavement management program?
Yes.
And, and how, you know, it's going to move forward beyond the first year. And, and that also is something that the Better Streets Commission can also, you know, take on because that's kind of one of the things we were envisioning is that they would be, you know, the discussion portal or conduit, as you might want to say, for all the things related to the pavement management program. And that could also afford, you know, if, if they, you know, bring this up as an item, that could also afford the community the opportunity to, of course, to speak there as well and could serve, you know, as a good forum for community input addition, beyond what was presented tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Could I?
All right, yes, Jim?
So assuming that we did not want to go forward this year, middle of April would have been more or less our cutoff date to report back to West Valley Collection and Recycling. And if we choose not to move on this impact, this refuse fee at this time, I think it would be an excellent pavement management program discussion as part of the budget process as well as a very open, transparent item to be discussed with the community through the Better Streets Commission, whose entire focus will be looking at drainage, traffic, speeding, pavement, concrete. So I do think that it's an excellent topic to bring before them as they have not had their first meetings yet, but when, when they begin to, the Q and A portions of tonight's meeting could really possibly be considered as an open forum with them.
Okay, great. Do we have a date on when the first meeting is going to occur?
We don't and the staff's attention is turning to getting that cranking in a very big way, starting this week actually, and I'm going to be working with Jim a bit about that. But it, it, it may be, the timing might be right that, because it sounds like, you know, we're not obviously going to make the deadline for, you know, getting any fee adopted if the council so choose to the West Valley and Collection Recycling for the next fiscal year's billings. So in that case, I, I think, you know, we have the council or the commission members set and we could certainly, you know, this could be the first meeting in addition to them getting together and introducing them to, you know, what the Better Streets Commission is. And then it's possible that a discussion could happen there. They could come up with some recommendations and it still might be able to flow into the budget process that those recommendations could be brought to the council as part of the budget preparation, you know, mid-spring to, mid to later spring. I think that would be an excellent idea and a great way to really jumpstart our new commission.
Jumpstart, yes. Councilmember Ann standing?
Yeah, we've got three months, so I would hope that be, you know, we've got the rest of January, February and March to look at this. So hopefully from a budgetary standpoint, it shouldn't, our budget's not that big. We should be able to get to the bottom of it fairly soon. But the point I wanted to raise with all the people that are here this evening, who are the members, we should identify who the members of the commission are. So if they want to make contact with any of them, it would be a really good thing to do rather than waiting in the future. So they are, colon?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Send the minutes.
Send the minutes for the previous meeting.
I know, but what are, who are they? So.
Almost.
One of them is a city planner from Mountain View who lives right over there. That's Erin Path.
Can you say a little louder?
Yeah, so it's, it's, and I don't have their first names so we can get those, but it's Chafin, Lawler, Levine, Path, Spencer and Azim.
And the youth commissioner was?
So it's five voting members, residents of the city and one youth commissioner who's ad hoc, who cannot vote.
But who is part of the discussion.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so stay tuned to our website and also if you're not in our Nextdoor group, I would highly suggest getting into it. A lot of great discussions go on there. The city is now part of Nextdoor and not only do we post our agendas and our meetings on our website, but we also do post meetings or specific agenda items that we think the public is going to be really interested in on Nextdoor also. So that's a great place to keep up with what's going on here.
And because for the, any discussion that might come up to the Better Streets Commission or ultimately the city council in terms of budget and the possibility of this fee, we would unlikely to be, we would not likely be, be doing an all-city mailing, which we did for this particular item. So what I would encourage anyone to do, if you want to specifically follow along, which I'm, I'm sure most of you do and that's, that's just awesome, make sure that we have your contact information. I think we have some of that through the speaker cards. But what I would say is if you specifically want to be notified when the Better Streets Commission will be having their meeting and you want it, you know, us to send a notification directly to you, we do need your email address if possible. That, that we will post their agendas and you can look for them on the city's website, but we wouldn't necessarily be able to let you know specifically unless you gave us some contact info. So I encourage all of you to let us know how we can reach you.
All right, thank you very much. So I think we're going to move on to item number nine.
I think we have our direction. Thank you everyone for coming. We really appreciate it.
Take like a two-minute break, well, I have a feeling a lot of people are. A lot of people probably aren't as interested in our committee commission assignments.
So, because it was a public hearing, so.
Please leave the door open.
I know you guys all want to go home.
Yeah, I got school tomorrow at 8:30.
I'm fine.
I have a coffee tomorrow at 8 o'clock too. All right, so we are on item number nine, which is the city council commission and committee assignments. And I was going to see if our city manager wanted to introduce this item. Would you like to introduce this item, which is city manager? We're on item number nine, committee assignment.
Yes, the city council commission and committee assignments. These, of course, are at the prerogative of the mayor, who I believe has reached out to all of the council persons about their preferences. And what we did was we gave each of one of you a copy of the existing assignments. And if I'm not correct, I believe the mayor is basically soliciting an A-OK as to where the other, the other council persons are and if there are other, you know, things that they might like to do. But in general, we were going to start with the list from this year and see if everyone is still okay with the assignments that have been made. I don't think we have any new ones, do we?
Not yet. Just two points. Procedurally, so the, the mayor makes a recommendation, but ultimately the council does approve the assignments. So we will need a motion and a second and a vote. And we will be bringing forward in February a, potentially a new position that we can deal with that is the clean water program, but that'll be at a future meeting.
Okay, great. So.
So what are we doing tonight?
So I basically took last year's list and I sent it out to everybody to see if anybody would like to try to move into something new or if anybody didn't really enjoy going to a really boring committee meeting to jettison it. And everybody seemed pretty happy. I, I did hear back from a couple of you about some times that they just wanted to try to keep open. But essentially the list didn't change from last year. So unless there were any thoughts that you had about changing, if you, again, if you want to jettison something or, yes?
I have a proposal actually to the Civic Facilities Master Plan Ad Hoc Committee. Maybe we should consider getting rid of that.
I think we should rename it to the Taj Mahal.
So we can't do that tonight. We can't get rid of it tonight. What we could do is still make an appointment and then bring it back as a future item. Do you want to get rid of it?
Just a proposal, because, and the other one is the Comprehensive County Expressway Planning Study Policy Advisory Board. Well, I've been on that for two years and it has never met.
But just in case. But just in case.
Yeah, there's, there's a few of them. The other ones I was going to bring up was the Association of Bay Area Governments. I know we don't really do a whole lot there. That's generally been the mayor that's taken on that position and I don't know if anybody else wanted to. So this is generally a, a semi-annual position and you go to a dinner or lunch, I can't remember. But they're usually up on the peninsula and they're, and they're, I know inconvenient for a lot of us to get to them, so.
If you, I know you have a lot of stuff and if there's something you don't want, I will take it. I don't care what it is, it doesn't matter. If there's something you don't want, I'll take it. And if not, I'm happy with, with what I've got.
Yeah. And I'm also curious what ABAG is actually going to be since they've been pretty much subsumed into MTC.
My year with ABAG, we didn't even meet once.
Yeah, so.
So can I say something? Because I think I gave you my list. My problem with the Santa Clara Valley Transportation is that they meet when I'm still in school. It takes me an hour and a half to get here and so I can never make their meetings. So rather than put me in a committee that I can't make meetings, I, I gave you a list of things I couldn't be in.
Right. Okay, so would anybody like to take on the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority?
I can't because we work with them as a client on occasion.
Okay.
I did it for many years and found it to be, I, I don't want to do it.
I, I was on it too and it was literally just, here's what we're going to do, go back and report to your councils.
Do we have to, do we have to send somebody to that meeting? I've been on it for a year. I was on it for a year also and I, I agree with the comments that were made about its usefulness.
Well, I mean, it's not like they're going to kick us off. When I was on it, I showed up and somebody said, oh my God, nobody from Monte Serino's been here for two years. It's amazing to see you. So I don't, I don't think we're going to get kicked off of it.
Put me on it. I'll be happy to do it. But I don't want to be valley mayors and managers anymore. I don't think you'd want me there.
All right, that one's good.
I'm sorry, which one is that?
So the Santa Clara.
That one I got. The Santa Clara Valley, because there's several listed here.
Yeah, Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee.
So that is?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, the 10th, ninth one down.
Okay, so it's.
And so councilmember Turner, we're going to scratch off of that. And councilmember Rogers is the alternate on that. Did you want to stay alternate on that or did you want to take over it or?
Which one?
Oh, no, you said you can't be on that.
I don't think legally I can.
No, no, you said you would. I just want to see in case.
Legally I can't because, because if you're doing, have them as a client, it's kind of a conflict of interest.
So we would, we would need an alternate for that then? Let's leave the alternate open for right now.
I'll be the alternate.
All right. Councilmember Wolsheimer will be the alternate.
And maybe what we could do for ones like that is, you know, monitor the agenda and if the agenda comes up and you look at it and you go, well, there's just nothing here of interest, well, you certainly can say I'm not coming.
But when the water one comes up, I think that was the one, if no one else wants, I'd be happy to take that one off.
Okay. Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority. Do you like that one still, councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Okay.
Which one, is that, what's?
That's the, that's the Route 85 Policy Advisory Committee?
No, that's the one that they meet usually at 1:00 in the afternoon. And they change the times all the time.
Yeah, it's all over the place.
Yeah, so I can't attend those meetings.
All right, so let's scratch you off of that one. Actually, it's a kind of an interesting one.
I'll be a fan.
Councilmember Rogers, you want to be on that one?
I just don't, I, I'd be happy to be on, I just don't know if it's a conflict. I'll take it and I'll, I'll do it, but then.
It's a policy advisor. All right, it's a conflict.
If there, if there a source of income to you.
And actually, how much longer?
Not often, but every once in a while.
And, and I'm also just curious, this wasn't supposed to be in effect for more than a year or so. I don't know how much longer it's really going to be going on. I haven't gotten any emails from them in a couple of months, actually.
I can't imagine it's not going to continue on.
Well, not until they spend all that money.
There's a lot of discussion still.
All right. Well, then you.
So we, for this one, we have?
That's councilmember Turner and, and myself is the alternate.
It's going to remain, she can't do it.
Right. So you could, you could put me in there and I'll just make them whenever I can.
Kurt, give me one of your things that you don't want to do.
I know, but I like all my stuff.
If there's one you don't want to do, I'll just give it.
So you want us to list you as the primary for that one?
Sure, go, go ahead. Curtis, you want to do the, be the alternate on the Water District Commission?
Absolutely.
Definitely take that one.
Okay, Water District.
I'll even be the main guy if you don't want to do it, but that's, that's.
Well, since I gave two up, I can be the Silicon Valley Animal Control. I have chickens, so they probably are okay as animals.
I'd also, I'd love to do that one.
You'll have to arm wrestle with me for that.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll be your alternate.
That one's, that one's like one of the popular ones.
I was on it for four years, three or four years.
So are we still doing the Site and Architecture Commission Regulation Review?
That's an ad hoc.
That, that was an ad hoc, so I was sure if we were going to keep that one.
What happened to the Silicon Valley Clean Energy?
Oh, so did you still want to be the alternate on that one?
No, I can't see, that's at 4:30.
I'll be the alternate.
You know what, that's actually wrong. It's at 7 o'clock at night, but.
But I have, I have the West Valley Sanitation District for Richmond Chairman this year at 6 o'clock.
Oh, then we should scratch you off of that one.
Which one is that?
I'll take it.
Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority and councilmember Wolsheimer said he would be interested in that one.
When is that?
It's the second Wednesday at 7 o'clock. It's at the Cupertino City Hall.
Second Wednesday of the month at 7. And so, I'm sorry, who's the primary?
I am.
Okay. And who's the alternate? Okay, and who's the alternate?
Councilmember Wolsheimer.
One meeting in two years.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see.
The Traffic Circulation Advisory should be canceled.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
West Valley Sanitation is already taken care of. The West Valley Solid Waste JPA, that one, councilmember Rogers and Turner. And Youth Commission is councilmember Rogers and myself and West Valley Mayor and Managers. I'll take over that one.
That's a fun one.
Okay, so let me read it into the record so we'll have it. So I'm looking at the 2017 list. So the changes we, that are being made are, the first one is to Santa Clara Valley Transportation Advisory Policy Advisory, sorry, VTA Policy Advisory Committee. That's primary, Marshall, and alternate, Avert, right?
Which one is that?
The Santa Clara...
The VTA PAC.
Yep.
Or PAC. And then for the next one, the VTA State Roots 85 Quarter, primary Burton and keeping, just Burton. And then we'll monitor the agendas. And then for Santa Clara Valley Water District Commission, primary Avert and alternate Curtis, right?
It's me. So if you can't make it, just please let me know.
Okay, no, I have sort of a love-hate relationship with that committee.
And then...
I love to hate it.
And then Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority would be Burton and Avert, right? And the meeting's at 7:00. We'll change that. Traffic Circulation Advisory Ad Hoc Committee out. And then the only other change I see is West Valley Mayor's and Managers, which is the usual mayor and vice mayor.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Do you want to send an updated list out?
We will, yes.
Now we're on the vehicle impact, no.
Did I miss something?
Little time warp there. All right, let's see here. Annual Approval and Signing of the City Council Code of Ethics. Everybody ready to sign? I brought a red pen, though. I got to get a blue pen.
Signing ethics red is...
So this is different from what we signed last year?
Same one. We sign it every year.
Sign it every year?
Has it been changed since when Marshall and I did this six years ago?
Yes, councilmember Turner and I think, made councilmember Ann standing, rewrote it.
Where is it?
It'll come through. I think we'll just do that after the meeting. Oh, it's in my little thing here.
Can we just do that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Not your core values.
Oh, wait a minute. This says Code of Ethics.
Yeah, the City Council Code of Ethics.
What's in here?
This was, so if you look on the dates...
It's right here.
It's all your things to sign. It was adopted in July of 2012 and then it was just reaffirmed. So it really, I don't think it has changed. But we adopt it each year to just sort of remind everyone about how ethical we are.
How ethical we are. Who are we at, 16, right? I'll just pass it down. And while we're doing that, committee and commission reports. And we'll start this year off on the right-hand side.
Just for us here, I think I wanted to report on the, what's that? The West Valley Sanitation District. We're also going through this process of raising fees, right? So, so the way we're going to do it is we voted on the fee structure. Then we bring it to the public. We're going to mail a postcard. And then we solicit input and then we review the input they've given us. And then we have another public hearing and then we vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Meetings, no commissions.
All right, councilmember Ann standing, nothing. Councilmember Rogers?
I've got nothing.
All right, and that takes us to council comments. Anybody have a comment? Yes.
I have one. I would like to, again, ask staff to put on one of the next agendas, the issue of removal of eucalyptus trees.
It's on its way.
On its way.
Thank you.
I asked for that one, too. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Yes.
There was a great story on CBS News on, I think it was Friday of last week.
Leona.
Yes, about the New Jersey city that...
I thought it was excellent, too.
Yeah, that posted signs that prohibited people from driving on certain streets at certain times of the day. And in order to not get ticketed, you have, had to have a sign posted in your, on your rearview mirror. And apparently, I don't know if it's been challenged in court or not, but they've been fining people like $200 or $250 when they do it. So, and they were doing it as, at the base of the George Washington Bridge going into Manhattan because people were using ways. It's called the No Ways Project. And it was, it was an effort to stop the traffic. And it was actually, it sounded like a really fabulous idea, so I would hope that we might be able to take a look at that.
And I also saw that and thought, that is an absolutely brilliant idea. But even more so, I would say, for our neighbors. So I haven't had a chance today, but I was going to send a link to Matt, the Morley, who's the Public Works Director in Little Scadis, and say, have you seen this? But I think, you know, it could be another good thing to add to the Better Streets Commission agenda, you know, for them to start a discussion on, is that some way we could help with the cut-through traffic?
And I don't have any committee or commission reports also. I'm sorry, we're on comments. I did have one comment. I don't know if it's possible or I don't know what our timetable is for the AV upgrade, but can we get a taller microphone for that thing? I watched three people up there and they're like, hello, councilman, and they're like hunched over and I just felt bad for them.
The earplugs for one of those guys.
I know. Well, he really bent over. He was like right on top of it, but no, I don't have any other comments. All right, so then city manager report.
The only thing I had, which was related somewhat to the upgrades to the chamber that has still remained. We are still having some difficulty with our contract with the City of Campbell IT in trying to really get the last of the things we want to do in here, which mostly revolve around the electronic voting and the addition of a single camera so that we can have video with our audio. So I do apologize that that is taking longer than we thought. I had found an outside person who could help us with a number of things related to the camera in terms of installation and all the things we needed to do. And they were super helpful about a month ago when they came to do a few little things for us, but for some reason, they've just fallen off the face of the earth and I can't get them to return my calls. So I, we had intended to have the electronic voting in by now, so I do apologize for that. But we are, I would say, we're very close to implementing that one last major feature that we were moving towards with the upgrades for the city council chambers.
Well, I think we know the city manager there, so perhaps we can...
That, I have tried that.
What did they say? They just are too busy or?
We have a, you know, as you guys are aware, we have a contract with them for IT service, but I, my impression is they don't have time enough to do their own stuff. And so we fall by the wayside.
Way down.
And yes, I was in the parking lot one day with the IT manager and the city manager there and expressed my consternation. And it seemed to help for about a month or so, but it's fallen off again. So I am looking, I am also looking for some longer-term solutions for IT support.
Okay, and I still need to get that name to you. I haven't talked to that guy in a little while.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That would be great because I'm not having luck finding anybody.
All right. All right, then this...